If not, is our motion to accept the agenda.
So move.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor, please see the five as saying aye.
Aye.
Well, we have in our midst tonight, we hadn't seen for a little while, but she'll come around and then then is our clerk of the circuit court, Ms. Janet Hicks, and she's here to swear in the newly elected board members. Welcome ma'am.
(laughing). I'd like to thank you all for inviting me to be in Florida this evening to get some of your applause, to continue fulfilling or to fulfill your upcoming duties coming January four. I'd congratulate Mr. Hinkle and Mr. Hicks for being reelected for positions, and I look forward to continuing to work with you all, and thank you for your continued service to our county. Mr. Hinkle has elected to head his oath of office at ministry here on Wednesday, wherein his family can be present, so we will not be administering his oath tonight, but I would start with you, Mr. Hips. If you will, please stand and raise your right hand, ladies. Miss Hips, can you mind going to the microphone, because we're not making up the recording?
All right, excuse me for that. Okay. Do you, Trevor L. Hips, do solemnly swear affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors representing the Wreck Island District for a four-year term of office beginning in January 1st, 2024, according to the best of your ability, so help you God. Okay? Congratulations to Mr. Wolfskill for being elected to your position. I look forward to working with you, and I thank you for your willingness to serve our county. Mr. Wolfskill, if you would like to come forward to be sworn. Is it proper for us to be here, or can it get in the center of the floor?
Either way you'd like.
Okay. You're gonna have things to say.
You cannot, David Wolfskill, do solemnly swear affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors representing the Appomattox River District for a four-year term of office beginning in January 1st, 2024, according to the best of your ability, so help you God. Not sure if you have a pen on you.
Okay. If I can get you to sign right there. All right, thank you very much. If I can give that back to Mr. Richardson. All right, thank you all. Mr. Hogan, thank you for your service to our county, and if there's no other business, I'm officially done.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. Robbie Richardson, Sheriff-elect. Come on up. Name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Name and record, name and address for the record.
Robert Richardson, 18595 Richmond Highway, Pamplin, Virginia. So first off, I want to thank y'all for many of the agenda to have me here tonight. I just wanted to, I got two things I'd like to ask. On the first one, there was a, which I think you'll see a little bit later in the agenda, there is a circuit court order to close the circuit court on Tuesday, December the 26th, and also Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024, and I was hoping that I could ask that we could also have that same holiday given to the county members of the sheriff's office. The second thing is, we are, we have three vacancies open. I've got quite a few applicants that we've been lucky enough to have been sworn in through another agency, so they got years of experience. Right now, my years of experience are dwindling. My highest level of an officer that's not a supervisor is three years of experience. So they're looking to come onto this office, but they're coming down at forty-four one hundred right now, forty-four thousand one hundred dollars. That's what we'd be paying if they came now. They can't accept that because they're taking a huge pay cut coming from another agency. So I'm coming before y'all to ask if we could give each one of them five thousand dollars, offer five thousand dollars, and see if they could take that, which will put them forty-nine-ish and one hundred dollars off the top. So most of them that I've talked to, we have not made any official offers yet, but have said that they were willing to come for that amount of money. I can't offer their, any position until January 1st, but I also can't offer this money until I can get approval from the board that I can offer this amount of money. So I'm coming to you to ask today if we could add ten thousand dollars to my budget to offer five thousand more dollars to salaries to these two individuals once we offer them positions. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Let's back up just a second. Mr. Aaron Hawkins, CPA, Robinson, Thoma, and Cox Associates. Welcome, sir.
Thank you for having me this evening. I'm here to present the FY23 financial report, and I'm gonna start on page one. Does everyone have a hard copy in front of them? And just before I even go into this, we did finish up everything last week and sent everything to the state on Friday, December 15th. So I think last year I was probably here presenting in January or February because we needed to get a VRS valuation done, I think for the folks at the school board. So very happy to be here presenting to you in December this year. So on this first page of the report, it also contains our opinion on the audit, which is unmodified, which means that based on the testing that we did, the financial statements that follow these pages can be relied upon, and that they're materially correct based on our testing. One thing you'll see on this first page also is that there was a change in accounting principle. There was a new accounting standard implemented during FY23 related to subscription-based IT arrangements. And I stood here last year and talked a little bit, I think, about a new standard that went into effect for leases, and how it was gonna change how leases are reported, as opposed to just being worried about what we pay on a lease every year. We now have to put on our financials what the expected future payments that we're gonna have to make. And so the same thing is now happening with these subscription-based IT arrangements. And so I don't believe there were any that were affected on the school, on the, excuse me, on the county side that needed to be reported, but the school board did have, I think, at least one of these new agreements that needed to be reported differently. I'm gonna skip ahead to page 16, and this is where you see your general fund and the changes in your general fund balance for the year. You will see fund balance actually did go down this year in your general fund, and there's good reason for that. It began the year with about twenty-six point two million, ended the year with about twenty-three point seven million. Well, last year, your fund balance increased by about ten million dollars. The reason for that was you took out some debt to, I believe it was school-related debt for capital projects. And so last year, your fund balance went up ten million dollars. Now that you're starting to use those funds from that debt issuance for these capital projects, the fund balance is gonna come back down. And so that's why you had a decrease in your fund balance during the year. I'm gonna skip very far ahead to page 142, and that's because this is where you see our name, Robinson, Forma Cox, at the top of this page again. And this is where we have to issue our report on internal control testing and compliance work for the, during the audit. And this is where we would identify any findings related to any internal control testing and state compliance that we have to do. And we did actually have one finding that we had to report this year under state compliance work, and you actually see it on page 143, the top paragraph there. We identify the finding as 2023 dash zero zero one, and that finding gets reported on the very last page of this report. It's, for over at the school board, they didn't advertise for their, for their budget for their public hearing. There was considerable turnover, I believe, at the school board this past year when that was taking place, and it just slipped through the cracks with kind of explanation from talking to them. And so that was a finding that we had to report on. The school board had, needs to give, I believe, ten days' notice. It may even be seven days' notice for the, for the public hearing. I'll tell you in a moment when I get to that finding. But on page 144, this is our report, and this contains our opinion on the federal compliance work that we have to do for the county. And if we had any findings for the federal compliance work that we did, we would have to report those here, but we had no findings to report on our federal compliance work. On page 150, you can see what, what federal programs we did test in relation to that last page I was just talking about. There was one program, the Education Stabilization Fund. That's also known as ESER at the school board, all the ESER, which is COVID-related funding that they've had. We tested that as a major program, and we had no findings to report, as I mentioned before. And then on that very last page, page 151, it is ten days, ten days' notice that the school board has to give the public for their, public hearing related to their budget. And they did, but they did not issue, I don't believe they, they put out an advertisement at all, but I'm led to believe that's gonna be corrected and changed for FY24. So those are the main things I wanted to go over. I know many of you are probably just getting in this, in your hands for tonight, but I'm glad to try to answer any questions that you may have for me.
On the, excuse me, on the finding that you did observe, has that been rectified?
I believe so. I can't say for certain, but I'm led to believe that that was supposed to have been rectified for FY24, but I can't say for certain one hundred percent that it was.
Floor is open for any questions. Well, we are happy, especially toward our department heads, our county staff, and all for this report that you've just rendered to us, that I think is very, very beneficial to the citizens of this county. And we thank you, and we wanna make sure that this is put out to the general public. And I see some newspaper media here, and that's fine, that's what we want. A lot of times, we don't get nothing but negative from this. This is a little, uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. We didn't have any citizen comment. Anybody signed up?
Oh, okay.
You wanna say that, yeah.
Is it anyone, any citizen here that failed to sign up to speak to the board? If not, we'll move right on. Now we'll go to the eternal flame, Mr. Hinkle.
Mr. Carter, for I don't know how many years, the American Legion was gonna try to find the MOU that was originally signed, but they couldn't find it. We've been giving money to the American Legion, and they've been taking care of the eternal flame as far as making sure it gets filled with gas and any repairs and whatnot. And in discussion with the American Legion leadership, they would like to be dissolved of that responsibility since it, and over the years, it's just basically the county's always called them, seen it first and called them. So it's, and I know that what we've been donating to the American Legion, although they are a very good cause, has been over and above what the natural, what the propane cost. So I make a motion that the county tag back over providing the propane gas and maintenance of the eternal flame.
Motion made, is our second.
Mr. Chairman, is there a lease arrangement or a document that is involved in that?
No MOU was found at the American Legion offices, and we're talking to Mrs. Adams, we didn't find any record at the county either.
Second.
So you're second? Okay, discussion. Well, let's have a roll call vote. Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I'll also vote aye. Okay. Next is December the 26th, excuse me, the day after Christmas. And as you have already heard, the county court system is off. The judge has been gracious enough to give the employees their time off, and I think it's incumbent upon us to grant our employees a day off, meaning December the 26th. Now, in saying that, it could create a lot of confusion, could create a lot of bad feelings, but I hope not. So I'm gonna open that up for discussion on the floor, to have a grant, our employees, December the 26th, off. And the floor is open for discussion. Mr. Hogan.
What about this, January 2nd? What, that's, I guess, what day's the first of them?
Monday.
Monday, yeah.
And the courts have granted the second as well? But that's not a state holiday. Monday.
Monday is.
Further discussion? Well, I'll make a motion that we will give the county employees, December the 26th, as a day off for Christmas. I'll make that formal motion. Is our second?
Our second.
Discussion.
So we're not including January the 2nd?
No. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
And I'll also vote aye. Okay. All right, Ms. Adams. Next gentleman, 2D volleyball state champions, the women's volleyball team. I think everybody in the county is aware, and if not aware, please be aware, that we have within the county limits here of Virginia State Championship Girls Volleyball. And that's just the first time, first time, if I understand that. Is that right, Mr. Jameson?
I know you've, okay, thank you.
So that is, that is a lot to be proud of, there's no question about it, for the dedication of not only the students, but the parents, and all others that are associated with that. And in doing that, I think we need to present to each one a resolution stating their, what they have done to the team members and the coaches. Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I feel that would be appropriate.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is our motion?
So move.
Is our second?
Second.
Discussion. We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I'll also vote aye. Okay. Next is a public hearing, isn't it, Ms. Adams?
Yes, it is.
All right, public hearing. CUP 230666, F.B. Lishford Jr. And we have two people that have signed up, and the first being Jody McChesney.
McChesney.
McChesney, okay. And as you come up, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Jody McChesney, 2295 Richmond Highway, Spout Springs.
All right.
Trust, respect, and beautification. Think about the vision statement of the Board of Supervisors. The core functions necessary to achieve our vision, you have seven listed out there. The second one is put tourism at the forefront. Three is job creation, and seven, community appearance. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Lishford for the business, income, and the jobs that he provides to Appomattox County, which is referenced in core item number three. Board, I ask that you reflect on the three words I started with, trust, respect, and beautification. The vision statement, the third paragraph starts, "Leadership in our community will strive to act with integrity, trustworthiness, cooperation, and a dedication to public service." I would like to bring to the attention of Appomattox County that we have a chair of the planning commission who is disrespectful to citizens of Appomattox. In the last planning commission meeting, Steve Connor stated, and I'm summarizing, "I would rather have this on board on 460 versus next to somebody's house." It is next to my house. I am somebody, my family is somebody, and all property owners are somebody. It is disrespectful that the board did not even speak up to reference what Mr. Connor said about the citizens and the property owners of Appomattox. That's concerning to me. The first paragraph of the vision statement, "Appomattox County will be a place where family and community are valued at the highest priority. I do not feel valued. Where you can live, work, and play within the trusted confines of our towns and surrounding neighborhoods." How he, how can he value someone's property more than others? I personally do not trust that he has the best interest of Appomattox or the citizens in mind. Mr. Lishford has been disrespectful in not abiding by his original permit, and has been brought to the attention that he has been impinging on property lines already. In the trailer, trailer storage lot, you can see from 460 that there are many other things in that lot other than storage trailers. Without how, with that, how can we as a community, county, and Board of Supervisors trust that he's gonna stay within the restrictions of his permits in the future? I also ask that all property line restrictions be enforced to include the west side of his property. Steve Connor suggested that that property line not be enforced. Even though it does join another storage lot-type property, should that property be sold or transferred to new owners, our county should demonstrate respect for all property lines. I would not want this to deter any future land owner from purchasing the land. If that property line restrictions are not enforced, what impression could that leave for a new property owner in the future, or even our current property owners? We have the opportunity to set a precedence, that we want our business owners and our property owners to be within the restrictions of their permits and boundaries of their properties. This will show that we do value landowners, our community, and our county. Now, beautification. Board, you have the opportunity to value and improve the beauty of our county. Only two miles within our county line, this is what travelers see as they enter our county, and just as they leave, one of the last things that they see as they leave Appomattox County. Board, I ask that the fencing options be removed from the conditional use permit. Referencing, referencing the vision statement in the fourth paragraph, "Appomattox County will manage growth along our primary corridors of Route 460, Route 24, Route 26, and emphasize growth that is near our town centers while preserving our rural character and abundant open spaces, rivers, and other natural resources." I am requesting that only a burn be allowed to be built to aid in the beautification and add to the natural vegetation that is already in that area, and also aid in living out our vision statement. I ask you, what impression do you want people to have as they come into Appomattox County, and what impression do you want them to be left with? Each of you have a responsibility to improve and aid in the beautification of Appomattox County, and I do ask that you refer to the core functions necessary to achieve the visions of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Carlton Thompson. Please state your name and address for the record.
I will. I'm Carlton Thompson. My wife, Carolyn Thompson. We own, we at 2487 Richmond Highway, Spout Springs, Virginia. We own probably seventy percent of the land that matches up with Bebo Lishford. This thing working? Y'all hear me okay? I, I wanna thank whoever in this room, if they're here, of finally bringing this ISO to y'all's attention. And I was wondering, I got the paperwork from the, from Jody Rourke. Do y'all have that on your desk? Could we? Let's, let's just refer to the page on the back that shows this picture right here. Y'all don't have it. If you look at this picture, his property, this wooded area is mine, okay? Mine and my wife's, mostly hers, but anyway. Up in this corner right here, you can see an early view of all the truck, the junk trucks, cars, whatever. But as you go up that red line, that line is the old road bed. That's where the line markers are for the, for my property, his. They all gone. Okay, in the very corner up here, if you look real close, you'll see some old-looking, white-looking trucks and things. They own me. They own my property. Been there for twenty-five years. Came to the county, they asked the county to come up and look at it. No one looked at it. Couldn't get nobody to come up and look at it. He has a permit for trailers, for a trailer storage, okay? Not a junkyard, not a trash bin. If you don't mind, while I'm talking, I've got some pictures to show you. And I've got Jody that just spoke. On my phone, I didn't take all the pictures, it got blown up. I got one real personal one in there that shows her daddy right beside, pretty close to the landmark, and you see all this junk on me. Of course, all those, all those stakes are gone now. He had it surveyed. I've known Bebo all my life. We've lived here all our life. I wanna just let y'all look at these pictures, but Jody, if you show, show a couple of those other pictures, let y'all look at it. Take your time, and that's what you get when you have a storage trailer business. Now, Mr. Rourke assured me that he would be the one I'd go to if I have a problem up there. Okay, some of the things I wanted added to this proposal, we didn't, we didn't get to talk a second time we had the meeting. And Jody will tell you, this is a, this has been changed, first proposal, setbacks and everything. And Steve Connor told me, says, "Mr. Thompson, all you want is the junk moved off of you." He's, that's not true. I want that charter to look like somebody's happy to come in Appomattox and see in our, our community, like the Walmart down here. Y'all got a certain facade put on that to go in with the old type history around here. Now, me being a ruiner, we give money to the county for the beautification of the county, and here we got an ISO, you know, five hundred feet up from the county where our, our location's located. And, and don't think about me, don't think about the, think about y'all. Think about the county people. You go by it every day, if you go to Lishford. You come back by it every day, but you can't see what's behind there. That stuff's been pushed all through the woods.
Mr. Thompson, excuse me.
Yes.
Address the board, not the office.
I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry. All right, well, I got a few items. That one of the items I would like to see changed is, he has got a bond to, if he, if y'all go along with this, he's got a bond that if he don't do what he's supposed to do, the bond would kick in and clean the mess up. On, on this right here, okay? I would like to see a few things added to this. Item one, he had a survey, he had the property survey. The, the survey stakes, stakes have been knocked down because he's been removing. he's been removing some of the junk off of it now, okay? Six A, if y'all will follow along with it. It's got trailer storage, nineteen ninety-five. I went to the county, worked it up, nothing got done. Okay, he had got a facility access concept plan approval, one hundred and twenty days. Everything moved off of thirty feet off of 460. Why can't you have that same rule for the backside? Why you just got the front side? If he's moving it off the front side, that's because we don't want to see it. Those people driving down the road. I heard moving that off of thirty-five, off at the same time, move it off of me, okay? All right. Okay, he'll tell you that years ago, there used to be a swamp area, we used to call it. I'm an old person now. And it's called a wetland now. He filled that in. He'll tell you it's filled it in. It's got boulders, rocks, junk, anything you want to think of it, that hole. Okay, they ask him to plant trees.
Mr. Thompson, excuse me, the time has elapsed.
Time's up?
Yeah.
Well, the main thing I'd like to see, something go through, is he gets a bond to take care of this. You ask him, he's got another junkyard in the county, too. Ask him about it. You don't know where it is. I'm not going to tell you. He can tell you.
Is anyone else here to address this?
Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sir.
I'm here on behalf of Mr. Litchford. If you'd like me to address the board, I can at this time.
That'd be fine.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good evening, folks.
So that's what he's speaking of, has been moved since the last meeting. It has been surveyed, the ribbons are bad.
We're not going to get into a discussion at this point.
Let me handle this for Mr. Litchford.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Carter, members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. We're asking you to approve the recommendation of the joint planning commission. The proposal that you have was approved on November eighth. Four voted for it. There were no nay votes, one abstention, and there were two members absent. I think the complaint is a legitimate complaint. The concern of both citizens that spoke is legitimate concern. What I would say is, Mr. Litchford has for thirty years, or thirty years plus, provided a service to the community. State police call him, he's there at a moment's notice. He has the facility there where he can pull his, the damaged automobiles or whatever it may be. Anyway, he's been there for many years. It's been, many would say, an eyesore for many years. As you go out of the county or come in the county, you see those trucks lining 460. So, Mr. Johnny Rourke with the planning commission, perhaps others, again, I kind of like Mr. Thompson, don't know who initiated this. I'm just here trying to help get it all done. Someone initiated it. And Mr. Rourke has tried to come up with a plan that everybody can live with, and I think the plan is a fair plan. It is, I think it addresses the concerns of the community as well as allows Mr. Litchford the opportunity to continue to operate his facility there. So, this was originally addressed by the county seeking fines. I got involved, the judge of the district court asked me to help Mr. Litchford move this through with a conditional use permit. So, they pumped the brakes on the judgment against Mr. Litchford that was over ten thousand dollars and said, "Hey, instead of assessing you fines, Mr. Litchford, why don't you go and try to get a conditional use permit?" So, we did that. And had two meetings before the zoning board. The first one, there was public comment, and Mr. Thompson's correct. At the second one, there was not. But there was a lot of back and forth. Between the first meeting and the second meeting, there was a survey by Mr. Michael Goan and Mr. Goan, myself, and Mr. Rourke. We worked together to present a plan, and there was some back and forth. We didn't get exactly what we wanted. But so there was a little give and take. So, I think we came to a good arrangement. I've got a plat here. Happy to pass it around. But the basics of the plat, the basics of the conditional use, it allows them to have the automotive salvage and graveyard there on the facility with certain setbacks. That's the most important thing, is the setback and the berm you've heard described. I'm just going to point it out, and you can take it and look at it if you'd like. This is 460, and this is headed west out of the county. This is the property of Mr. Baxter, and this is already being used for junk type storage. This is the western property line. So, in the plan, you'll see that there is no setback there. And the reason for that, we think, is pretty simple. There is junk of Mr. Baxter's on the fence. There is junk of Mr. Litchford on the fence. Mr. Litchford's not complaining. Mr. Baxter's not complaining. No one's really complaining, except for there are some citizens that have some complaints. So, there is no setback there. Along this back triangular line, from the top northwestern corner to the bottom southeastern corner, there is a thirty-five foot setback, and that is the standard backlot setback that is established by the county code. So, there is really no deviation there. There had not been, that rule, if you will, had not been followed. Mr. Thompson had been encroached upon, and when we did the survey, we saw that. Now, I think Mr. Litchford's trying to rectify that. I think that's why some things have been moved, and I think that's what Bebo wanted to say, is I've been trying to clean it up and get my stuff off Mr. Thompson. But that was an issue. So, what we've suggested is, in the plan, come off that thirty-five feet. So, there'll be no junk, no automotive parts, no truck bodies, nothing from the line back thirty-five feet. Now, who's going to police that? I don't know. There'll be a time period for Mr. Litchford to get in compliance with this plan. If he doesn't, there's a bond that can be, I guess, exercised, and those funds would be used to remove those items and get the property like it needs to be. Now, once it's where it needs to be, who's going to police it? I don't know. I imagine Mr. Thompson and others are going to let their voices be heard if Mr. Litchford crosses the line, so to speak. So, that back line is thirty-five feet per the county rules. On the front, all the way down the 460 line, it's thirty foot setback. There is no berm or barrier requirement for the majority of that length, and it's a good distance, actually. There is a berm requirement or a fence requirement where those trucks are located. If you look at the property, and I've got one picture I think best illustrates this. It's an aerial view. May I approach the board?
Oh, yes, sir.
I see that there is a vegetative barrier already on the, when you look at the pictures, the left-hand side of the picture. But as you head east, there is no vegetative barrier. And so, what the plan calls for is for there to be the removal of the trucks, because they're under the power line. They're way too close to the road. So, they have to be removed back from that line, not the road, but the property line thirty feet. And then that berm is going to be built, or that fence would be built. There was some discussion earlier from Ms., and I may mispronounce her name, Ms. McKenzie, sorry if I did, she thinks a fence would be better. Well, there is some latitude there for Mr. Litchford. Fence with certain requirements, eight-foot fence, berm with certain vegetative requirements. There has been conditional use permits in the past where the county said, "We're going to do a berm with vegetation," or excuse me, it was no berm, it was just vegetation. The vegetation died, and there are the trucks. So, there are some negatives to the berm. Oh, it might be in time this morning. Guess I should have been. I've got this plat here. You can look at it. But we think it's a reasonable plan, reasonable conditions, and we think there's some give and take. It's certainly not going to be cheap for Mr. Litchford to get it done if he does it. Of course, the bond will be forfeited, and they'll be able to exercise that, have those funds to get the property where it needs to be. But this is going to clean up the roadside. I think it's going to look nice. I'm asking you for your approval and send this back for, I guess, enforcement with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Anyone else here to address the board on this subject?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hoad.
Can I ask Mr. Walker a question? Ask him maybe several questions. The bond that was being referred to that's in the CUP is how much?
The recommendation from the planning commission was for a hundred thousand dollars.
And that is supposed to clean up the property if he doesn't?
That is for.
Abide by the condition?
That is for performance of the conditions. Yes, sir.
So, I guess the other thing I have, this has been an ongoing problem. He's been out of compliance for twenty years. It's from what I read in the packet.
Or more.
Or more. What assurances do we have that if we make new conditions, he's going to abide by any of those?
Yeah, I'll take that one. This, the question kept coming up, who started this process? Johnny and myself, guilty as charged. We realized at some point this needed to be addressed, so we filed a civil action in general district court to initiate the process of enforcing the existing violations. And when we got in front of the judge, one of the questions from the judge is, what's missing, key ingredient missing, and we pointed out a conditional use permit. And so, what the judge said is, "Well, I'm going to delay this. I'm going to continue this case and let the applicant seek a conditional use permit with some new enforceability provisions." Because it's, I mean, most of our provisions and our requirements go back to the seventies, I think, for him. And there's some arguments as to what, where the violations were, trying to enforce old. It's cleaner for the county if we get a new conditional use permit with new agreed-upon conditions that we've all agreed, we've posted a bond. So, basically, the purpose to this is to get it into a more, I'll call it manageable concept, or more manageable sphere, where we can actually have measurable targets with measurable setbacks and berms and screening. And the bond, we are hoping, will be sufficient motivation to cause the applicant to go ahead and get into compliance. And so, I mean, we technically still have a court case pending. It's just been continued. And so, the goal is here to put some detail on what needs to be done, get some more modern, current detail on what needs to be done, that we can then pull out the new current document and say, "Here are the requirements. Here's what you need to do." And it's simply, it's easier, if we have to enforce it in court, it's easier even for the property owner to have a new list of county expectations. So, really, the goal of all of this is to update our tools for getting this property cleaned up. And that was a very long answer. I don't know if it answered what you were looking for.
So, the other question I've got is, if we don't approve the CUP, what then? And is he forced to clean it up, or they just fined the ten thousand dollars and the junk still sits there?
Well, he would be fined the ten thousand dollars, and then we wind up in a discussion with the judge as to what he'll make him do and what he won't make him do. I mean, part of this is to, I mean, because the judge, we would then present our case as to, we think he's in violation here, here from these nineteen seventy-five conditions. We think he's in violation here based on the current ordinance. Then we're going to have a discussion, was he grandfathered, did it exist? And so, this kind of eliminates all of those discussions and debates with the judge about what's enforceable, how it's going to be enforced, because we now have a fresh set of board-approved conditions that the applicant had input into and that we've all agreed upon. So, from a court perspective, it'll make it a hundred times easier if we do have to go back to court.
Reverend Jones.
What kind of timeframe? I mean, I understand about having a bond, but I mean, is it indefinite?
No, the bond has a twelve-month expiration. If all of these things are not done satisfactorily at the end of twelve months, we would call the bond. And if you look at condition number thirteen, it actually says that if the conditions are not met, the property owner will be notified to cease operation, okay, at this location, and the bond will be called to mitigate outstanding conditions. So, that's above the bond, the amount of the bond itself, is the ceasing operation.
So, it is a time?
So, it is a time, yes.
My next question. So, on 460, is it any provisions for there to be any kind of barrier?
Let me speak to that, because I wanted to clarify that. I think a lot of that guy a little confused. So, on 460, on the eastern lot, which is where the trailers are today, there's limited amount, none, so to speak, vegetation. There's a little bit as you get to the western end of that lot. So, that is the portion that they were talking about adding a barrier, whether it's a fence or a berm. I think most people are leaning towards the idea of the berm. The berm would be three feet with minimum four-foot-tall trees planted on top of it at the time of planting. So, you go from nothing to a seven-foot barrier in the short term. Those trees would, they would be evergreen trees, so they would grow over time and be much higher. Or an eight-foot fence is the other option. There's two, kind of two options for the fencing, but you're either an eight-foot fence or vegetative barrier at the start. The other part of that is there's a buffer requirement in front of the barrier that adds trees and shrubbery along that part from the eastern boundary convergence point to where the trees start, which is roughly five hundred feet, maybe not quite five hundred feet, but along that part. The natural vegetation that's in place on the western lot, that would have to stay as well as a buffer. So, that would be an existing buffer that would be their vegetative buffer in place. And one of the conditions says that if that buffer is not sufficient, then it has to be supplemented as well. So, that's on the front. Now, on the back, same condition, that the natural, the existing natural vegetation has to stay in place as a buffer, and where there are holes or gaps, that has to be supplemented with new vegetation that's a minimum of four-foot tall at the time of planting.
So, what are the neighbors asking for, far as on their line? What do they want, a fence? They want vegetation?
The way I've understood it is, the neighbors want the material off of their property, which is part of what this would do. It would, everything would have to be moved back inside those boundaries. If you look on page twenty-three of your packet, there's an aerial photograph with some red lines on it. Everything would have to be inside of that area. That's what we're calling the facility area, inside those lines. So, that would get it off of the neighbor's property. It would get it thirty-five feet off of the neighbor's along the backside, get it thirty-five feet off of the common boundary. Inside that thirty-five feet would be a natural buffer that would have to be filled in. Any gaps would have to be filled in with vegetation.
So, do the neighbors have any kind of input as far as whether they prefer fencing or vegetation or both? Do they have any?
They just expressed their comments at the public hearing at the planning commission.
Would, do you feel like they were satisfied?
Not sure.
Okay. No, she spoke. She wasn't satisfied.
So, any other question?
What is considered permanent fencing?
I don't know that we have a definition of permanent fencing, but I think it would be.
In your conditions, you have a metallic opaque fence or a chain-link fence that has a privacy screening on it. And it's described in condition, let's see here. Condition seven-three describes the options on the fencing, if that's the option that's chosen.
So, the follow-up question. So, what are the neighbors asking for? Are they asking for vegetation? That's what I'm trying to see. What are they asking?
I think I heard on the backside, they're asking for vegetation. They don't want a fence.
Okay.
Along the, and that's, and it's not an option on the backside. The backside is vegetation is what's in the proposed conditions. On the front side, there were options given.
Thank you. They on that front side?
Yes, sir.
We've tried trees before, haven't we?
In the conditional use. In the conditional use permit that was granted in nineteen ninety-five for the trailer storage, there was a very short, the only condition that was added to that, uh, permit was for him to plant some pine trees along the eastern boundary. There was no definitive length, there was no width, just plant some pine trees. I don't know that they were ever planted, if they died, I, I have no idea.
Well, if my memory serves-
There are, there are no pine trees there, I can tell you that.
If my memory serves me correct, uh, Mr. Litchwood planted those trees. But I don't know whether due to the nature of the soil or what, but it, they never did grow.
Yeah, and in condition seven, five, you will see that the property owner is responsible to maintain the screening and vegetative buffer in perpetuity, including replacement of any trees, shrubs that die and so forth. So that is a condition, so if they die and he does not replace them, that would be a violation of his conditional use permit.
Mr. Chairman.
Reverend Jones.
Yes, do you think there's been a good faith effort toward the neighbors in terms of the cleanup? How are we progressing with that?
I could not speak to that at this point.
Okay. Who will be responsible for enforcing whether's, whether Mr. Litchwood is in compliance?
That would be myself.
Okay.
That they would, you know, it would be, it would be normal, it would go through our normal complaint process that we have.
I've got a follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. So the screening and vegetative buffer, is it either or, or is it both?
It's both, on the front.
On the front?
On the front, it's both, on the back, it's vegetative buffer, which provides a screen.
So on the front, does vegetative?
There, there's a berm or fence that will get you seven to eight feet of screening. And then in fr- between that and the highway, the, the property line, there will be additional buffering, additional planting. And they're spelled out, one per every twenty feet, that gives you a number of trees and shrubs.
And the, well, I guess this is for, I guess our discussion, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, well, before you leave, I have one more follow-up question, please. Another one. So is there any contamination on the property, on the neighbor's property, oil, whatever, that has to be cleaned up as well?
Uh, we're not aware of any contamination on site. And, uh, there is a condition in here that if any of that oils or fluids are being removed on site, then he would have to go get a DMV salvage permit. That's where that comes from, that starts from. That brings in your DEQ when you go get that permit. And that's one of the conditions, is that if that activity is happening, that permit would need to follow.
So any of the things that were on the property prior to that?
Well, they would get caught in the permitting process with DMV or DEQ.
Okay.
I do have another one, I'm sorry. I, I apologize. On lot, the, the lot furthest west?
Western one, yes, sir.
The one around the house site?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, junk is not supposed to be in front of the house, correct? But it is. Is that gonna be rectified with this, or is that, we're just leaving it where it is?
Well, that would be thirty feet from the property line. So whatever's within that thirty foot would have to be moved back. I know there is some things within that thirty feet, there's a, there's a shed that's within that thirty feet. So there's some things up on that end that would have to be moved back, not necessarily behind the house. I'm not su- I'm not sure what that measurement is. But it's, it would be thirty feet from the property line, which is roughly where the telephone poles is.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the trailers themselves, they do not constitute fencing, correct?
Correct. No, the, the, the fencing or berm is spelled out. It's in here as to what constitutes that fencing. No, the, the trailers are not fencing.
So since all of this has surfaced, uh, has the property been inspected?
I've been, I've been to the property and I've taken some photographs of the property. And I know, uh, they hired, um, Mr. Gowan to take some prop, to take some, uh, surveying and take pictures and photographs. If and when this gets approved, I would go out there and document the property as it is today or upon approval, and I would document the property as we go through, uh, the process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Reverend Jones.
So I'm trying to make sure I understand the complaint or the concern of the neighbors. Is it that it hadn't been followed through in the past and?
I think that's one of the bigger-
And now?
I think that's one of the bigger things.
Okay.
And if I had, I don't have that file, but I have another file, uh, that goes back into the eighties. And, uh, Mr. Thompson's correct, that there's been, that almost immediately, there start, started to be a pile of complaints through, and, and they go throughout the decades.
Catch, thank you. I think that's my last one. Yes, I think I'm-
Mr. Chairman. I'll thank Mr. Hogan and Mr. Jones for, uh, asking plenty of questions that I didn't have to ask. It's a difficult situation that falls on our backs after decades of, um, inaction or avoidance, or whatever that may be. So I, I know that there's not going to be a solution that's, um, going to make everybody happy. But I think doing something rather than nothing, um, by, by passing this is probably the right first step. And then hopefully, optimistically, um, we'll, we'll see some improvements on the property and the, uh, visibility issues, especially for the neighbors. I hope that that's, it, well, actually, that would be a question, is there an order in which these things are done? I assume not, just that there's compliance generally within twelve months.
No, there's, there's no specific order.
Well-
Uh, there's an order for the plan to get in place.
Not, not in the execution?
That's the first thing, and once you get the plan in place, which the survey that he brought you is, uh, part of the way there, that's gonna be the base document to their plan. And then, once they get the plan in place, they have a certain number of days from that to execute and move things to, to the facility area. I believe it's a hundred and eighty days from, from that point.
The point was to say, I hope it starts with the neighbor's property lines, um, to, um, get off of those property lines and, and push back, um, from there and improve that situation as much as possible. In the end, I hope that compliance, um, happens. And, um, I will move that we accept this, um, change, this zoning change, this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second. We do want to make note that on item thirteen, uh, it says, within thirty days of CPU approval granted, the property owner shall post a performance bond in the amount of a hundred thousand. Doesn't say a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand Hershey kisses. So, you know, that needs to be corrected. And I also, in reading it, all the questions that were asked by Mr. Hogan and Mr. Jones are covered pretty thoroughly in this, that resolution document.
Okay, the motion has been made. Do you listen? Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
So if it's a rule as is, who decides whether there's a fence or a berm? Does that fall back on the, the applicant?
Yes, that, that, in, in your, in the conditions, they are-
It's a choice that the applicant has.
A choice for the applicant.
Um, I, I, I think it should be a berm, uh, because an eight-foot fence doesn't hide what's there now. So I, you know, to me, it should be a berm with the vegetation, uh, planted on top of it. And I don't know that the hundred thousand dollar bond is enough, that's just gonna barely get you started. If he doesn't comply, a hundred thousand dollars ain't gonna get it done. I think that needs to be revisited. I would, I know there's a motion on the floor and a second, but I, I would prefer this go back to the planning commission to address some of those issues. But, um, I, that, that, that's, that's my two issues I would have with this.
Mr. Hogan, if I could allay that concern, I may be out of order, but if I could allay that concern, he plans to build a berm. Uh, I know you want that as a, a specific requirement, that's what he plans to do. So all I can do is give you our word, that's our plan, um, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion on the floor, second. Went through discussion, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hips?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Henkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
No.
And I vote aye. Okay, so it's, it's gonna be, gonna be in your hands, Mr. Litchwood.
May I approach and retrieve my documents?
Oh, yes.
I don't know who's-
Okay. Next, organizational meeting, please schedule the twenty twenty-four organizational meeting of the board. A recommendation from staff is to consider the first working day of the new year, which is Tuesday, January the second at six P.M. Any, uh, any, uh, consideration on that? That's what we normally do it. Is our motion then to make, uh, January the, the second at six P.M., the organizational meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four holiday schedule. Attached for the board's adoption is the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule for Upper Midas County employees. Staff has included a copy of the Commonwealth of Virginia twenty twenty-four pay and holiday calendar that the county aligns with for employee benefits. Is our motion then to adopt the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule as is?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm noticing that Christmas Eve is on a Tuesday, Christmas is on a Wednesday next year. I would suggest adding December twenty-third, which would be Monday, to the holiday schedule so that the county employees would not be working Monday and then having Tuesday, Wednesday off, similar to what we did for the Fourth of July, when the Fourth of July fell on a Tuesday. So I would make a motion that we accept with the addition of twelve twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, that's very good, very good. Motion made, second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Committee of performance, Social Service Board, please consider the reappointment of Mrs. Barbara Williams to the Social Service Board. Mrs. Williams has agreed to serve another four-year term in the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Being as I'm on that board, I'll make that motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion? All in favor of reappointing Mrs. Barbara Williams to a four-year term, please signify. I say an aye.
Aye.
EDA, please consider the reappointment of Mr. Don Jones and Mr. Garrett Bossinger to the Economic Development Authority, both are willing to serve another four-year term in the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Is our motion to reappoint Mr. Don Jones and Mr. Garrett Bossinger to the Economic Development Authority for a-
So moved, so moved.
So moved, is that second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Planning Commission, we need to appoint a representative to fill the dedicated position of Mr. Steve, Stephen Boyer, Falling River District Representative, who has resigned with an expired term in the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So.
Mr. Chairman, I've contacted several individuals, uh, I'm waiting a positive or negative response and had not received. I do imagine it's due to the holiday season.
Okay, that sounds good, we'll table it till January.
Sounds good.
Everybody agree with this? Okay, Board of Zoning Appeals, please appoint a representative to fill the unexpired term in the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, replacing Mr. Kenneth Whiskell on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, does anybody have anybody? Well, I guess we're gonna have to table it to January. Next is Piedmont Probation Services, please appoint the newly-elected Sheriff Richardson, effective one-one twenty twenty-four, to the Piedmont Probation Services Board. Sheriff Richardson is willing to serve on the board. Is there a motion to appoint Sheriff Richardson?
So moved.
Is that second? All right.
Whichever one you don't pop there for the motion, make that on the second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Next gentleman is our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes approval of all bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the Consent Agenda shall be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of any board member prior to the vote on the Consent Agenda. Items removed from the Consent Agenda shall be considered by the board individually, in order which they were removed from the Consent Agenda immediately following consideration of the Consent Agenda. And I hope everyone's had an opportunity to peruse the, the, uh, Consent Agenda. Any comments, any questions, any concerns? Here none, is our motion to depr- to approve the Consent Agenda as is?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, Mr. Hips? Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Henkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Latchney?
Uh, no report other than to say Merry Christmas, Mr. Chairman.
And we say Merry Christmas to you. Mrs. Adams?
Yes, sir. So you have a copy of the county administrator's report before you. You will notice there's an attachment, and that came from Mr. Shepherd. He wanted to update the board on what the maintenance department is doing, what they're doing, and what they're planning to do. So that will start being a, um, part of our report. On behalf of staff, I want to say thank you for the December twenty-sixth holiday. I've received a lot of questions about that, so tomorrow will be a happy day for them when I tell them that the board has approved it as an extra day. Thank you.
Let me make sure, you know, I include, you know, sure, it's all.
It's, it's all county department.
I know, but I wanna make sure.
Um, also, we, our new finance, our finance department has a new employee, Janet McCombe, and so she's the new face that's sitting to our left. So I wanted the board to, uh, meet her, and, um, you'll be hearing more from her in the future as we progress through the budget season.
And she's my neighbor?
She's your neighbor, wow, that's good.
Well, welcome to paradise.
I know I'd sent the email out about the skill games that were centered by the Commonwealth's Attorney and the county attorney. So I wanted to make sure everybody had received that, um, I guess it's an order, Mr. Latchney, or whatever it is.
It, it's just a, a legal document, it's, it's, it's a legal opinion document that was circulated to businesses.
Okay, so I wanted to make you aware of that, um, I think we had talked about it in a previous meeting. And, um, I wanted to say, our, our, um, courthouse committee will be actively engaging in meetings going forward. We've signed the comprehensive agreement, and so now it's time for the board to get involved in the design process. We did ask the architect to provide a three, some type of three-D dimensional video to give you an idea of what it's gonna look like, so hopefully by January, we'll have that. So you'll be able to see what the renovation should look like. I think I've hit the highlights here. I will say that the, uh, Public Safety Committee continues to work- I will say that the, uh, Public Safety Committee continues to work on the radio system. We have three meetings scheduled this week, three, four-hour meetings. In the evenings, the vendors will be presenting the equipment, and there'll be fe- uh, an opportunity for all the public safety, um, agencies to ask questions about the equipment. So, um, hopefully, the questions will be resolved, and then we'll have, um, a meeting with the consultant, and then bring it back before the board, is, is the current plan. I don't know if Mr. Hogan or Mr. Hinkle wants to add anything to that, um, that report. And, um, I want to thank Mr. Hogan for his years of service on the board. It's, it's been nice working with you, and I feel like we've made a lot of accomplishments over the past eight years. That's hard to believe, wow. Time flies when you're having fun, right? And, um, and, um, congratulations to Mr. Wolfskill on being newly elected to serve on the board. I think that's all that I have to offer unless you have questions.
No questions, but, uh, just something that to make you aware of, that, uh, at the end of December, we have a, uh, D S S employee who's retiring after, how many years of service? Twenty-four and a half years? So we wish you luck in your endeavors, and thank you for your service.
And you know something I did fail to mention until I saw the mayor pamplin? I don't know if you had the opportunity to attend the parade and the, the holiday events they had on the, on that Saturday, but I have to say, it was pretty invigorating to, to be able to, to experience pamplin, being so active. It was a, a great crowd there, and, um, it was fun. I look forward to, to future events there.
Can I look up invigorating?
It was, it was really, it was, it was very festive.
I'm sure. All right, supervisor concerns, Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones.
Yeah, I'd like to express, um, my heartfelt, um, appreciation to Mr. Hogan for, I learned a lot from you on my two years on the board, how to speak when I need to speak and keep my mouth closed, and I need to keep it closed. But anyway, I, I really appreciate your leadership and hope you the best.
Thank you.
Mr. Hinkle.
I'd also like to, you know, express my, uh, appreciation of Mr. Hogan and being able to work with him for the last four years, and, and especially on the safety committee, and hear his insights and stuff, and how he seems to be calm and cool when the rest of us sometimes got a little animated. And I, you know, just appreciated working with him, and thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I think I'll go for you. I too appreciate what you have accomplished in the last eight years. One of the main things that's in each citizen's mind is always taxes. And you have held your foot on the taxes, on expenditures, we glad to see that. Cause a number of years now, we were raising taxes, two cent, three cent, and even one year, I can remember, it was six cents. I mean, it was terrible, but since then, since you've been on board, along with the rest of these supervisors, it has been good. No tax raise, no tax raise in the last eight years since Ms. Adams been here. But, all of the dedication, initiative, and looking out for, not only the citizens that you represented, but the counties, the county as a whole, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Hogan, can you talk for Vernon Allen?
I could, but I won't. Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, we may have an unfinished agenda item. The sheriff made a request, and I don't know that we discussed it.
Oh, all the deputies. I know it, I know it.
I, I do have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask. What kind of experience level are we talking about here?
So, the application that's got right now, it's anywhere from three to ten years. So, I've got some, the, the three-year, I'd like to at least bring them in, and where are three-year deputies being paid at this point? The, the reason I was asking for five thousand, cause that's basically what it's gonna put them at with the three-year rate, um, as well as our ten-year rate, you know, it's where compression is at this point, is we're basically the same, so we're at forty-four thousand one hundred right now for base pay coming in. So I was asking for the five thousand to bring them in at a higher rate, even though they're still within that three-year rate, and it's gonna give a better chance of them getting up there to the fifty thousand dollar range, which is close to what they're making now, and what is being offered from other agencies around us, um, for their certifications that they have already. We're lucky, it's that time of year where there's a lot of certifications that are out, people look at the jobs for certain reasons, cause the new sheriff's coming in, things like that, but it's not you, everyday opportunity you get when people are already certified to bring to the agency. And the big thing I was talking about is I'm lacking experience in this county, and these citizens deserve it, just the experience that they can bring to the table, so that's the reason I'm asking for the higher salary to start them with.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hinkle.
Yeah. Sheriff, is there any savings on the training there, like, do we save money by, that we won't be spending by saving and sending them to the academy?
Yeah, absolutely, you'll be saving, I don't know the actual dollar figure that you'll be saving, but you'll also be able to put them on the road day one compared to six months down the road. If we don't get them in, actually, I might even miss this academy, so if that's the case, it'd be a year down the road before you even see any product, productivity from this individual, compared to if they're already, uh, certified, then we start them day one, put them through a small F T O program, just get them acclimated to the county, things like that, but they'll be out on their own working shift work at that point.
Mr. Chairman. Reverend Jones.
Is there, well, I guess, Ms. Adams, I ask you, um, where would we find the money from if we were to do it? Could we find the money to do it without going into reserve?
It's a possibility. Um, I would need to look, work with the sheriff-elect, because we've had some turnovers and everything, so we would have to just see if there's any, any cost savings as a result of that. And we do have, uh, an operating reserve that we can pull some funds from. So I would say it's, that it'd be, it would be safe to say it's in the current approved operating budget.
My opinion would be, uh, Mr. Chair, that we can't afford to let this opportunity pass us by. And we don't have a long time to kind of, you know, hash it out, because people, because there's a, a lot of demand for experienced law enforcement. So we have to make a decision.
Mr. Chairman, I, I totally agree with, you know, what Reverend Jones said, and also, you know, the way the world's going, our law enforcement are here to protect and serve, and, and I would, uh, fully support Sheriff Robinson's, uh, request and make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? All in favor, we'll have a roll call vote, Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Thank y'all, Mr. Hogan, thank you for bringing it back up.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, once saying all that, I hope for everyone has a Merry Christmas. And, Mr. Hinkle.
Let us rise.